...school board Monday, March 14th, 2016 to work. Uh, Madam School Board Clerk, would you call the role please?
President City Council members, members of the State Council, this is allowed.
Here.
Mr. President Adams?
Here.
Mr. Samuel? Mr. Adelison?
Here.
Ms. Robinson? Ms. Ray? Ms. Suzil?
Here.
I'm President Hilbert. President Mosby?
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. Uh, one more thing, Madam President, Smartina.
To all, we're here to provide a Spanish translation in case there are any Hispanics here. Now, caso que hay hispano alguno aqui que necesita una interpretación, aquí estamos a trás.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
It is a good day. We're all in the building together. We have the administration, our mayor. We have council and we have school board and we're here to discuss, um, our children and the furthering of their education and facilities and the plan that, uh, the administration has set forth, trying to assist us with getting forward and moving things forward. And so I'm excited about today and I hope everybody in the building is excited. This is the first of, the first of this type of meeting. And so I'm truly excited that we're here. Um, I'm here, I'm gonna start with you, with some remarks.
Thank you, President Mosby and Chairman Horns and to all, we're here. It's a pleasure to be with everyone. And I do think it's a good thing for us to, uh, be together. I think that any progress that we're going to make is going to be a progress that is unified if it's going to be sustainable. Uh, our goal today is to begin developing a long-term sustainable funding program to bring RPS to what they need to educate our children in a way that preserves the city's financial integrity. To do that, it's important to understand where we are as a city. In short, uh, last year's budget deliberations removed nine million dollars from city operations and sent it to RPS. A lot of the decision was good for school system's history and a real operational problem for other agencies. So to close the current financial gap, we're freezing, the city is freezing discretionary funding, uh, and hiring. We're enhancing revenue collections and we are proposing a one-time transfer of excess savings to cover the cost of January's blizzard. For the next fiscal year that starts July 1st, we're seeing subsidies to all non-departmental grant recipients by 25 percent. We're reducing many user fees and we're cutting the budget of every city agency by 10 percent. Uh, by doing this, we're going to hold RPS harmless from cuts and will enable the whole system to keep the increased money that they received last year. For the new fiscal year that begins July 1st, I'm proposing to hold Richmond all schools harmless and once again allocate the 11.2 million dollars of new money that was set aside last year for now. That means for the years, it's 22 million dollars. Now, with that being said, I'm aware that RPS needs additional funding and I think beyond what we, uh, have mentioned thus far. But city resources are limited, uh, all agencies have needs and everybody's work is important. And so we have two choices. One choice is to continue down the road we've been on or we're worried about how to divide a whole pie that's too small already. And the better choice is one where we all come together as we are today. The discussed options are develop a long-term plan that gives certainty to RPS and that gives certainty to the city's budget and that preserves our credit rating. And so the right choice is to develop a multi-year school investment funding plan that can effectively allow the city and RPS to know what they can expect year after year for the next decade. We all know that's the better course. Uh, last night I had the opportunity with some business leaders to, uh, have dinner with the chairman of the school board, Mr. Born, and the superintendent, Dr. Bedd. And we were able to talk about this honestly and openly for a period of time. And in concept, we have agreed to, uh, follow this course. Uh, we talked about creating a working group to lay out a long-term funding plan to make sure that it's physically responsible and sustainable. Uh, the group would be made up of city leaders, uh, school board leaders and stakeholders from the community, staff from the RPS. The group will have two responsibilities, to develop a long-term plan, to fund the capital and operational needs of RPS, and secondly, to preserve the city's financial health and credit rating. Uh, and so I hope that today, uh, we can begin to lay out the context in which a group like this will develop a proposal for consideration for city council to deliberate on and for the community to weigh in on. And to do that, I've asked the city's financial advisors from Davenport to talk to us today, to lay out the city's financial realities and then to explain our credit rating and why that rating is important. And then I've asked them to look ahead and lay out for us what funding is possible given current revenue and what additional funding is possible by dedicating a specific portion of revenue to RPS and what additional revenue might be possible from a tax increase, which should be endorsed by an advisor referendum just November. Uh, I've asked the communication from the office of community wealth building also to talk about the importance of schools in our neighborhoods. Uh, this matters because as city leaders, we have a responsibility not only to shape the future of schools, but also to shape the future of our neighborhoods. Finally, we talked about the importance of showing good faith, of making sure that this is not just empty talk. And so I directed my staff to begin drafting legislation to set aside 20 percent of all incremental new real estate tax revenue to fund school construction and renovation. This means that when new homes and commercial buildings go up in Richmond, the schools will be guaranteed to receive a major portion of the new money. When the city goes, so does school funding grow. I intend to introduce this legislation within the next month and it would be great to have co-patrons from city council. Uh, this is that show of good faith. It shows that we're all moving in the right direction and that we all recognize the need for sustainable, dependable resources for RPS. And so thank you very much to say that and I hope that we can move forward, uh, together with a sustainable plan that is projecting, uh, sustainable resources for the schools. Okay. So with that, Mr. Davenport?
Mr. Mayor, we, uh, have about 50 copies of a very short outline. Would you like to give the other one and use that as our perspective? Uh, I have a pretty loud voice, so perhaps if that's okay. Can people hear it?
Yeah, I don't like it.
Got the other one? Okay, alright. My first mistake I made is that. Just wait a moment till we all get the, uh, outline. We've got still the copies, hopefully the audience here. Just one more, Ron. We're good? Okay. Good morning. Uh, my name is Dave Rose and I am with Davenport Company. Right here in the city of Richmond, uh, that's the city of Richmond. And my children go to, uh, the city schools and, uh, in fact, um, I'll brag about one of them, Roland Kooch. He's a Fulbright finalist at, uh, Emory's College with Maggie Walker and her thesis, which I hope will be a winning one. We'll find out in a month, it's on the history of Richmond Public Schools. And so, uh, we're excited about that. Um, and so we'll see. At least he's a finalist and, uh, we'll see what happens. Again, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, Roland Kooch is my partner for almost 25 years. Is in the back as usual, uh, the one that deserves a lot of credit. If you want to admit, I'm the one that deserves a lot of credit. So appreciate it. Um, we'll just try to walk you through today, uh, what the mayor talked about, which is another outline that you see there for a multi-year school investment funding plan. Uh, it's just about four or five pages. Won't be very long. Um, and happy to, of course, answer any questions. Goals and objectives on page one there is really three-fold. One, as the mayor alluded to and I'm happy to expand, uh, some comments, is to make sure no matter what we do today and in the next few months, we protect the city's credit rating, protect the integrity, if you would, of the city's financial aid. Because again, that is the border stone for anything we can do financially, is to make sure we're in solid shape. So that's the first thing. Uh, the second, uh, is something that, um, I must admit, we took from something when I started my career and worked down in Miami and Pitt County as advisor about 1981, 1982, that created what they call, uh, a decade of progress program. And I thought it was a very successful program at the time, but again, it was centered on not just a couple of years, but an entire decade. So, uh, for lack of a better term for the moment, uh, we want to talk about something akin to that here in Richmond with the idea that in every single year, this plan would be such that folks would know what is a minimum dollars they could expect based upon the economic environment, based upon any number of other circumstances. So what we're thinking about here is to take the uncertainty, or a great deal of the uncertainty, out of subsequent years and allow both sides, if you would, from the world of the expense side and the revenue side to come together so that we can be in a mode to really understand what we have for several years to come. And then finally today, just like to talk about a timetable, it's fairly simple because as the mayor indicated, he's going to introduce some legislation. We're talking about doing something here literally for the next 60 days. So that begs the question on page two, what is the approach? And again, the approach is also meant to be very streamlined. Uh, you'll see what there. The first thing, as again, the mayor talked about, is to get the stakeholders to get a working group, a little smaller than this, uh, but one that can really, uh, roll up their sleeves and get to work hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And as I indicated, uh, the plan is to ask certain things in the city, asking certain things in the schools so that we, working with you, can actually pull all this together in a very sensible fashion to get something that's realistic. As the mayor said, just let me repeat, we're thinking about city staff, school board staff, city council representatives, school board representatives, financial advisory services for ourselves, legal advisory posts, business representation and citizen representation. So right there, I don't know the exact size, that'll be yours decision, uh, but it's going to be all of the stakeholders, or at least the majority of stakeholders, together, working closely over again the next 30 to 60 days. So the approach then is going to be, as we see it, and perhaps getting some of your feedback, to follow. First, with regard to the city, we are, as you know, some of you may know and have heard what I've said over the last several months, we are constantly reviewing the city's self-imposed financial policy guidelines. Those financial policy guidelines are part and parcel to why we have such strong credit ratings. Having said that, those policies are reviewed for any number of reasons. Couple of reasons that we're reviewing at this point is that, for some of you may be aware, GASB, that's the Government Accounting Standards Board, has been changing some of their policies over the last two or three years. And we want to be sure that our policies never mimic what GASB is talking about. In addition, the actual credit rating agencies have also amended their policies. When I talk about the national credit rating agencies, we're talking about primarily there are three: Standard Boards, MUDs and FISH. As we speak, two of the three formally amended their policies literally for the last 12 or 24 months. And the third is in the process of doing that, that being FISH. So with those two elements, if you would, GASB and the rating agencies, our focus is to revisit our financial policies. And one of the things we're going to try to do when we revisit those policies is to ask ourselves, how can we enhance debt capacity so that we can accelerate, if you would, school funding projects that right now we look at many years down the road? So that's one part and that's sort of the city side things that Roland, myself and my colleagues will work hard on to try to amend. The second one, you see there, it says number three, we're going to need some things from the city schools. We've seen previously a five-year listing of, you know, about 200 million dollars from 2017 to 2021. That's very helpful. I think what we'd like to also see then is what would be the next five years, the subsequent five years after that. If we can understand those projects, the prioritization from you and what those projects are, uh, that would also help because we want to dovetail, enhance debt capacity, the timing of projects and what they are. Again, as I said, dovetail them, see what we can do that's responsible. Then if you turn the page over, the other thing that I want to get from the Richmond City school side is some understanding of year-to-year cash flows, impact on operations. Uh, I read the other day, maybe it was a week ago now, where there is some talk about closing some schools. Clearly that may have some operational impacts. I don't think for the purpose of this study and this report, we're talking about the nth degree, but just an idea, a general understanding of what that might mean would be very, very helpful for us. And then lastly, going back to what we need from the city with regard to the overall capital needs of the city irrespective of schools. And what I mean by that, I mean, for example, as many of you know, not all of you, uh, the city was prior and did a very substantial jail fund, literally the first time in 50 or 60 years. Those projects, things such as streets and paving and lighting and what about you, we need to know from the city, just an idea over the next five to 10 years, how many dollars that is. Once we have all of those things, if you would, we can then understand what those dollars might mean against our debt capacity. And then we can look at what your projects might mean to debt capacity. And as I said, we can also look at enhancing debt capacity. So if you think about, there's really three or four components, we pull them all together. And then, you see that sixth point here, is to develop some funding priorities. And those would be based on a number of things. First, as we said, information obtained by both the city and the schools, which will be great. The second is to also make sure, there's been a bunch of talk about public private initiatives. We know that some folks have come up to go to the city, coming up to the schools about these public private partnerships. We're no stranger to that. We will take into consideration those public private partnerships. Excuse me. Third, we're going to look at school funding, beginning with existing revenues holding. We understand existing revenues holding while we're here today, because that's not sufficient. So the mayor, so we want to build on what is insufficient. And that is looking at existing revenues plus, as the mayor indicated, some direct funding based upon growth, whether it's 20 percent, 15 percent, whatever the number is, and whatever that quote level is, we're going to talk about and incorporate that into the scenario. And then lastly, with regard to scenarios, thinking about any taxes and equivalent dollars from advisor referendum, if that is ultimately one of the options that the folks around this table is dying. And you do, of course, some combination of all that. But I think where we want to go is to take all of those different components, build them into, if you will, as building blocks, and then come back to this group collectively or the whole four, the mayor and cities and schools and collective, uh, representation decides to do that and be in a mode to go on to the last page. So that, whether it's on or about two more, basically 60 days, if not less, from the April 1st start, let's get started early, uh, we would be in a mode to talk intelligently about what those options are, what they mean year-to-year for the next five to 10 years. And again, what would you require with regard to either advisor referendums, ultimately legislation if necessary, and then finally, from the world that we're in, any amendments to the debt capacity and the overall financial policy guideline. Uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Bedd, Ron and others, we're happy to answer any questions or sit down or let anyone else help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think that this has been, and I don't have a lot, but, uh, what I, what I'd like to add is, uh, we received from Davenport, I believe in January, the study on debt capacity and availability with this, I think, of that, close to 20 years, uh, maybe it was 10 years.
10 years.
But looking at that and whether we could, uh, utilize additional tranches of debt capacity. What I'd like to understand is, uh, has that changed given the current proposed budget? Uh, and what are the impacts of that? Because clearly, we know that the bond reading agencies have already cited us for certain things. And one of the biggest issues of us not getting any additional rating is our poverty levels. Uh, and so one thing, I think most people is taking the three is providing a better education is going to help people, uh, achieve outside of poverty, that they'll, they'll be better, uh, employable. But my concern is that knowing that for the next five years, we have about 49 million dollars of new debt capacity that can be brought on and the need for, um, we're at the same day with the current proposed budget and utilization.
Uh, for those of you who may not be aware, uh, my colleagues and I were in front of the city council at a retreat, I believe back in January, I'm not sure. Uh, and we at that time presented what was a five and 10-year visor for the city's debt capacity. What we mean by that is the city has a capital program over the next five years. And our debt capacity focused on over and above all of those approved projects for the next five years, which include some of the complete funding, the four new schools that have been brought on or in process being brought on under this administration. One of the things that we did was to show that under the current growth scenario, and that has not changed, appreciate it, uh, council, I think it was 50 million dollars being rounded off over the next five years. And then the new news was the next five years, it went to something more than 300 million dollars. So we had a very substantial capacity over a decade, but over the next five years, we're very much a tight situation. And I would argue 50 million is really almost akin to emergency needs and some miscellaneous things like current. So, I answered your question, but I mean that.
So the question is, have you all looked at the proposed 17 budget that has increased the capital program and the utilization of that 50 million to determine, under the proposed budget, how much is remaining of that 50 million for the next five years? My, my back of the envelope calculation suggests that there's an additional 26 million dollars in the CIP budget that is above and beyond what, what we have already appropriated. So that debt capacity shrinks to 24 million for the next five years. Half of it has been eaten up in the, in the proposed CIP budget and the dozen of the rest is schools. So that's where I think to have an honest conversation, we have to have the honest presentation of the numbers. Um, and, and what I don't see, and I'd like that to be a part of this review process, the approach, is we need to understand the debt capacity and the decisions that are being made. What I don't see also in this is, I think, we need to go back and look at every single line item that's in the proposed CIP or even the approved previous fiscal year CIPs to determine, have these projects moved forward? Are they still priorities for the city? If not, should we reappropriate those funds to reprioritize, given the constraints that we have on our debt capacity? Understanding that those constraints are real and we can't be partially funding a new park project that's nowhere even close to being beyond a concept. So those are things that I think we really need to begin to evaluate. And I don't see a review of the current approved CIP budget in this process. And I'd like that to be included.
So there, uh, first point is I have not yet looked at the 17 budget with regard to this concept of debt capacity, but that would be part and parcel. Uh, the second point is, um, certainly that was a given in terms of thinking about this. Because as you said, uh, if you don't know where you are, you don't know how or where you're going. So we will make sure, uh, that we look at that. And as I indicated, that fourth point, which was to make sure the city provides, we know CIP needs and urgency of, uh, potential move, not maybe largely in style, those types of things, it will be in particular, uh, of the city, out of, I think, that suit that kind of comes together.
Another question on, uh, what you said, Jimmy, from us in, in practice. We've seen our facilities dashboard report and option five, which is the word adopt approved in June of last year. Uh, because that, I believe, goes out 15 years some.
Right.
So I think that is prioritized by 18 months of work and need and sort of operating plan. So if you want to take a look at that and just let us know if that suffices. Um, second thing is, just on a general frame, is the operating budget a revenue stream for that part of the discussion or is it purely talking about capital?
Just to answer, uh, Chairman's question, uh, number one, I've not seen 15 years report, but that would be perfect. Uh, what I was alluding to was basically about October 3rd or 4th page memo, I think, to Dr. Bedd. And that gave some good detail over the next five years, and I think it was around 197 million, I just rounded off the 200 with regard to capital, it's a prioritization. Spoke to about the state of, I think about 105 million of that was brand new projects and other, I don't know, difference in 90s had to do with miscellaneous improvements of the payroll or what have you. So I've seen that. That's enough of your feedback and information. If 15 year has that over the next years, that would be very helpful. So that's the first, uh, of course, the answer I was going to make sure. Um, then with regard to capital, I think we're really trying to understand, again, not drilling down into the most detailed, meaning for a 17 budget or something that y'all are working on right now, but we just want to have a sense that if, for example, the next five years produces, let's assume you were five years produces, let's assume you were going to get all two-hundred million dollars of that, if you will, that was identified, projects and needs, what would that possibly do, year to year, if anything, to help operationally? Would that turn around and cut some dollars that otherwise you see needing? And so, from our perspective, that's going to be helpful, because when we think about a school investment plan, we're thinking capital, but by doing the capital, what is it avoid in terms of some of the extra maintenance that no longer be necessary, in other words, throwing good money out the bag? You know, that's the kind of things, if that's answering your question.
So it does, and I would just suggest that you start with the services task force report, because all those considerations were part of the eighteen-year discussion, how we do, when you guys spend money, say, quite a lot of these pieces, so that is sort of the common theme, so I think that would hopefully hit.
And it's interesting, you know, we just got this done, it's a little longer than we can take here, I think, in terms of, Cincinnati, where your services are based, not on the school side, but on capital funding for infrastructure, where it's public, while we showed an over, roughly, ten, in this case, a twelve-year program. The idea of not having to spend money needlessly and weaning off the equipment that was out and was in disrepair, spending so many dollars fixing that up and going directly to a series of new projects, new facility management, really impacted the dollars we had to save from throwing good money out the bag. So, I think we think along those lines here, I appreciate it.
Good morning. Thad Lanes, Director of the Office of Community Wealth Building. We've been asked to share a presentation on the interaction between neighborhood transformation and school improvement. Is it really significant area of overlap of interest between RPS and the city, as well as many of our stakeholders? And as you know, the Oxy Community Wealth Building is working great, it's a family with RPS in areas of early childhood and college and career transition. So what we have then, once we're set up, is Mark Olender, planning, will talk about the impact schools have in acreage, revitalized neighborhoods, and then we're going to sort of flip it, and I'm going to talk about why neighborhood revitalization is absolutely critical to the long-term educational success of RPS.
Thank you, Thad. I won't pop it if I put it in the folder. Good morning, everybody. As Thad was talking about, what are the other elements we need to think about as we think about schools and neighborhoods, we're going to do a little tag teaming. Some of you may have seen variations on this in the past, but I think one of the things that the mayor's talked about a lot over his tenure is how we move from realities of the past to the vision of the future. So, we're going to talk a little bit later, Thad will, about some of the East End stuff, you know, about Dove. But the idea has been, how do we create schools as a way to move forward? So that when we think about how neighborhoods of low opportunities, high unemployment, fine crime, continue to disinvest, and all the things that our capital budgets are trying to address, your budgets are trying to address, how do we take those things and move them to the next level, so that we create unique, healthy, and inclusive neighborhoods in communities? How do we improve opportunities for homeownership? The last seven years, eight years, have not been kind, thinking about how we improve the quality of life and opportunities for living the American dream in the city of Richmond and, in fact, most American cities. How do we create a mixed income, mixed tenure, and things to do with the Choice Neighborhood Program? Think about the significant public and private investment we've done, and just as an example, in the Dove area, twenty-six-plus million has been invested in the improvements around the former Dove Armory. How do we create great schools that build great neighborhoods? I think that's the thing, that we want to talk a little bit, and enhance community services and amenities. We'll get to a slide in a bit, but I just want to put this in people's heads. We haven't had a lot of discussion yet, or at least I haven't been aware of the discussion, which fundamentally asks us that the city of Richmond is going to continue to grow, and we are growing now, for the first time in a very long time, even though we're still under the numbers from as far back as nineteen fifty. And we want to begin creating new neighborhoods in those redeveloped areas that we're all talking about, the Scotts Editions, the Boulevard, Manchester, downtown, the East End. How does that get related to how we handle school construction or renovation in the We'll talk a little bit about this, this is just kind of an outline, real quickly, I didn't talk much about fiscal impact, I think you got most of that from Thad and Port, but it's understandable about how that works. Schools as a revitalization tool. We can do a lot to our cities, but I think until we actually get the handle on how we relate to schools and neighborhood revitalization and attachment to neighborhoods, we're missing a lot. So, the city has spent a lot of time in the past looking at corridor planning, corridor investment, making efforts, fix housing through a number of initiatives we've taken. I think the last item we need to look at is how schools fit into that mix. So why do schools matter, and why do new schools matter? I mean, one of the things of, you know, the trip on the box report that came out early on the, the short-term outline, like what we hope to see from them soon, talk about the Boulevard, just in the next ten to twenty years, we could see upwards of four thousand housing units in the greater Boulevard area. When you think about the larger Boulevard area, and that includes all Scotts Edition and Garrett other areas, we're over a thousand units now, and we're at nine hundred acres, not six acres. And so when you think about what are the opportunities in that area, and I think that's in the Fox attendance zone right now, what does that look like as these areas are what? I think there's an understanding or an expectation that a lot of these are single-person households, that most couples, schools, and families don't matter. I'm hoping that that changes. So schools should serve as anchors for economic, an economically diverse population. At some point, as we think about what budgets are, long-term capital needs, I think perhaps we should look at whether or not there's, there are new school construction budgets within them. And as the schools is a critical anchor for neighborhood community, based on housing units, open space, and other areas, great neighborhoods are an entire basket, schools are clearly one of them. I think we said a lot of this about case studies. Did a quick Google search last night, over two-hundred thousand things popped up as it relates to the relationship between revitalization of city schools and neighborhood development. I think there's a, there's an expectation and an understanding about how that has changed. Two examples, and we can email this to everybody that's come up in the past, out of Atlanta, the True Charge School, Centennial Place, both of them, of the housing projects, and the changes that those have created. This is just a hand-drawn sketch, and I will, that's hand-drawn sketch person, but I wanted to show one thing about this, as the city, we've got some staff now helping me begin the process of understanding the master plan for the city of Richmond. Over the next twenty years, what is it the city wants to be? Where will that growth occur? And what amenities and services we need to create to make that possible? So this is just some quick sketches about where we have spent some time over the last couple of years, and where I think we will spend more time. So it includes the East End, downtown, the whole Scotts Edition area, Manchester, and other parts of South Richmond. It also looks at the corridors, where I think we have a whole string of revitalization plans that talks about that. Other projects we talked about is how it relates to Melody and Turnpike, the Chamberlain and others. There are lots of places where the city can grow. If we want to add, get to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or others, what's the nexus between where those population growth centers are, the existing schools we have, what we may need to have in other places? Again, four thousand potentially right there, we have over a thousand in Manchester, we have a thousand plus there, we're thinking of totally redoing the East End, how does that affect our capital budgets? Thad?
If you need to, we'll heard of a version of this piece of it before, but just want to set some context again. As is repeatedly said, clearly, education is critical to poverty reduction, there's absolutely no question about that. But it's also conversely, it's also very clear that the background conditions of poverty in the neighborhood situation impact the success of public education, it is sort of a reciprocal relationship. And what the Oxy Community Wealth Building is trying to do is support a multi-program approach, which we're working on, employment, education, and housing simultaneously, with that call of building neighborhood wealth, which as that proceeds, should in turn lead to improvements in education itself. So, this slide shows some of the ways in which a successful redevelopment effort should promote school success, particularly in our most challenged schools, with economic disadvantages exceeding eighty or ninety percent. So, at the most immediate level, if people are getting to work, if families are getting to work, that leads to a more stable household, a better environment in which kids can focus and learn, reducing the stress level, reducing the number of adverse events that are happening to kids. Secondly, there's also a concentration effect, there's a difference between having a classroom of, say, twenty with three or four kids with major challenges, and a classroom of fourteen or fifteen kids with major challenges going on in their lives, based on what's going on at home. So the extent that an intelligent planning process that goes in force to create more economically diverse schools, that is, might actually help the teachers in the classroom. And then the last thing, at the systemic level, it's obviously more challenging to recruit the very best teachers and principals that our kids need when you have such huge challenges as the level of poverty we have in many of our schools. So, what we want to share with you this morning is, we actually are working on an opportunity to work together, the city and the schools, along with, obviously, the housing authority, the mayor, stakeholders, to actually change dramatically a neighborhood environment, and schools will have to be front and center of this. So, the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Program through the Housing Urban Development, there is an implementation grant opportunity, a maximum award of thirty million dollars that the city staff and the housing authority have been at work with this intent, these for some time period, and then the concept is basically to redevelop the Craigport area, the power grid for public housing units, to a total new housing development, twelve-hundred or fourteen-hundred units, many of which will be onsite, many of which will be in the new Armstrong, local Armstrong High School, what's normally called Pan, I get that wrong, the Armstrong High School site, and then the remainder at other places in the city or potentially of the region. There is, under the Choice Neighborhood guidelines, there is a requirement of one-to-one replacement of public housing equivalent units, everyone will have a place to go. And this grant, it's a very thoughtful program, and it requires you to think about housing and neighborhood and people. And so the components of this, you know, in terms of housing, first of all, the new stuff that's built has to be good quality, it has to be near to efficient, it has to be sustainable, it has to be inclusive, it has to be mixed income, it has to show it's a well-managed property. On the neighborhood side, you have to show you're bringing more public private investment into the areas of, that everyone, you have to show you have a school strategy, you have to show you have a public safety strategy, you have to show you have an amenity strategy. And then on the people plan, this is basically what support services are you going to provide to the residents before, during, and after the entire process. It's a much, much more rigorous and supportive process, and maybe some things have happened in the past. And education is actually at the top of this, following employment, healthcare, and quality housing choice, which means that those residents who do choose to leave the neighborhood, which they will have an option, are going to have a quality place to go. So, Dr. Bennet and Mr. Solomon, I had had a couple of productive meetings, and RPS will be working with us to help develop the educational component of that people plan. It's a huge opportunity for the entire city, we don't know how long that program will last, because we're really talking about transforming the pipeline for the three schools, four schools in area, and Woodville, and L. A., Armstrong, all of which have assessed eighty percent economic disadvantage and over ninety percent at the elementary level. So, just to summarize Mark's comments and my own here, the comprehensive revitalization in Richmond is doable, certainly challenging, certainly have to leverage a lot of resources to have an impact on a particular place, and that certainly is doable. And I would also say that it's necessary, if we're going to really make progress on reducing poverty and creating a better environment, where schools have a much better chance of being truly successful. Likewise, as Mark was stating, we're projecting continued population growth, and we have to figure out ways to leverage the new resources that have been, and those are most truly in need, we're not intentional about it, it won't necessarily happen. You know, and finally, and this is a key part of the Oxy Community Wealth Building that's working on, is building to support across sectors, including the philanthropic sector, so to make sure that these ambitious projects have the sustainable support they need over time to be successful. Even the Grant for Peace alone is a five to ten-year process, if all goes well, and then you think about the East End as a whole, even a longer process probably. So we have to build a sustainable support across all levels, and frankly, if they don't see that we're cooperating effectively at the local level, our chances of being a successful grant, I'm hung here at this time or in the near future, are not very high. So we really do want to pull together and, well, we continue to give that support and work.
Thank you both for the presentation. Where, what is schools' role in the master plan process? I mean, we have our facilities task force report that lists it, growth, and I think everybody here has looked at it and knows that our most immediate significant growth is on the south side of Richmond. So, where are we in this process?
Well, we're just beginning the process, I think that's a great question, and I think, as I've mentioned to some of you in the past, we really need to come together as we begin this broad set, have that discussion, because I think there are probably three ways we can grow the population, and that we got vacant land and vacant buildings we need to repopulate. We got areas where there are families coming, emerging, like you said, in the south Richmond area. And then we have these redevelopment areas that will become new neighborhoods in and out themselves. I think probably they all have slightly different intent on how we address facilities and how we look for. We all know schools, once they're built, are there for a very long time, you can't pick them up and move them. But I'm, I'm a strong believer that we need to work together as we get this process to understand what those three very, those three different kinds of scenarios look like, and how we can get somewhere in the five. As Thad said, I've been involved in a lot of neighborhood, pretty well, in my lifetime as a professional, everything takes two matters. So when you think about ten-year, what's happening in ten years with existing buildings, or maybe you could go to the new building, what would be the opportunity to have that discussion?
I would definitely recommend that schools be involved on the front end of this, and that the facilities task force recommendation that the board approved be a big part of this, because that's something that we've already had, and I think all the council members have been briefed on it, so it's nothing that's new to anybody, and I would like to see that be a part of this process.
Absolutely.
Yes, Thad, they wouldn't want to replace them with a house, and they're going to do these comments, I believe that's, the Choice Neighborhood.
Choice. Does that mean that the one and only place is actually a neighborhood, that's leading to that?
So the two pieces I understand about that, so the requirement is that it's public housing equivalent in terms of accessibility, so it could be called a tenancy-based algorithm, so it could be a property managed unit, so that it's accessible, someone's low income. And second, no, it does not have to all be onsite, it can be in the region. Our challenge is, is a requirement is that it does have to be accessible to all the community, which means probably we're looking at sites in the city at this point in time.
I just have a quick follow-up to the, it takes ten years to plan these things, but we don't have ten years, and signs are way behind the law. So I'm wondering how that fits into your planning and what's going on. We've had to throw good money out the bag, put in modular units at rented buildings, we're adding modules at Green Elementary as well, and those schools are literally overflowing with students with the expectation that we're coming. So we're in an immediate emergency situation on the South Side of Richmond's facilities.
My ten-year comment was basically driven by kind of neighborhood redevelopment issues like the Doves and the East Ends and Blackwells, where it's just, there's a lot of work you need to do. I think what we're seeing on South Richmond is just a dramatic change in the demography of that area, which is clearly, as you mentioned, entirely different responses related to how we think about that. From our perspective, at least, and from a planning and community partnership perspective, those are always the toughest challenges that are there, moving much quicker than we are in terms of discussion between you and councils to how some of that stuff moves forward. But when you think about what happens over the next five to ten years, we're making these significant capital decisions, as we all know. What are, what do ten thousand new units of housing scatter in specific parts of the city mean to the operations of schools and the capital budget and the income for the city of Richmond?
Let's take neighborhood revitalization, you know, lots of schools, now and others are immediately centered around, for that neighborhood. From a policy perspective, you know, it makes sense, rather than spend a few ten million dollars on standard community center, what is revitalization? Doesn't make more sense to put that money in the current, or to be shut, the walls and expanding at community center, because I think, I think it costs all and expand, it was a lot of, roughly two million dollars, so don't you go a bigger entry or block us than we're looking at, as we had in the Rock Rock Road, you know, we had a few schools as that central piece of community revitalization.
I'm going to take a pass on that one until I see what happens in other areas, because I, I believe, when you think about the comprehensive revitalization we tried to do in Dove, and as we're looking at, East End and other areas, we need to really think.
You know, I think that one of the things that's important, that's recognized, is that in order for the city to continue to prepare itself, I think the city's obligation should be as relates to how we look at a master plan, how we look at adding, how we develop, that we strategically will be at from the perspective of the revenue that is to be increased in Richmond. And that our economic development plan that we're putting together, that we've been working on, on, in all these publishing times, align itself with the revenue that we need to generate. We have got to recognize what the real costs are, and have to look at reasons and ways of raising revenue. We can't tax that way out of this necessarily, we can't raise home fees that we need to put out. Economic development strategy should be strategically and purposely planned for that purpose. And that's part of what the city is attempting to do, and has been doing, with the development of communities and neighborhoods. And Dove is one of those examples. We've been working on the development of Dove, about two fifty of brain, almost three hundred additional homes that have been breaking the traditional revenue for the city of Richmond for quite some time. And a part of that plan has always been to build a new school, as we've, as Paul has stated, the significance of our school needs as far as the new redevelopment process. For a multitude of different reasons, we've not been able to move forward with the redevelopment of the school. Clearly, you know, we have a school that needs work. The idea is whether we ought to renovate the school or whether we build a new school, we've been advised, the list going back, good money against something bad to do renovation of the school. However, we have consciously realized that we're also sitting on vacant acres of land in the city of Richmond that we're not redeveloping and creating the opportunity to generate a mixed income, which would change the population, which Dr. Ben frequently makes an interesting statement, that, you know, we can do all of the academic achievements inside the school, but what comes to us on the community is also a major factor contributing to our academic achievements. And so, well, this is a classic example, this is a public housing community that has been run down, tremendous crime rates and so forth, and we've been working for years to try to create this leverage of partnership, whether it's a new school, it's elementary school, whether it's an elementary no school model for the city of Richmond, which is an excellent, and I think a good model to be centered. But in the absence of being able to make a decision as to whether or not we want to build a new school now, we want to build a new school, we do want to build a new school according to the facility plan, it is still adopted, my understanding is for new schools to build there. We plan, we want to move forward with the redevelopment of the community, and so the idea of moving forward with the community house that will provide additional kinds of academic support services that community needs to build strong communities is where we are planning to move forward with the community, continuing with the housing of the community. However, if there is a change of heart, and I'm sure that you should look at doing something different, there's certainly a certain way to go.
So just real quick, and you know, so I get the concept, and I think the project is wonderful. I think from where we sit, you know, we're trying to maximize every dollar we can get, and I think that you all are too. And so if for the same ten to fifteen way dollars, which I think is currently, but it's a school and a community center, you could renovate the school so it looks new, expanding because of the increased rooftops and families that are around it, and get the community aspect of the community house to support the asset, isn't that the best of all worlds? Because as I, as I recall, Facilities Task Force, while we all say that they probably shouldn't be, they're going to be shuttered, it's pretty far down on our list of priorities, because we've got schools in South Richmond that are built for six hundred and twenty-five kids that now have over nine hundred kids. And that's what the policy is for growing, so my question is one more, the policy is to make a difference for community revitalization, neighborhood revitalization, whether we're really renovating, you know, you think about taking a house down to the studs, and you take the old house, if it looks brand new, you know, can you do that and still get the same effect for the neighborhood revitalization perspective, they're just building, you know, a standard community center, they're waiting for five or ten years to rebuild another school.
I just want to add that on that.
If we care a ton, is that how you have to change the conversation?
Can I just have a question? And I'm just, you know, we have been at the table for several years talking about building the house, we've been there for twelve or seven, eight years talking about building this new. It's time for the city for us to look at things that are generating revenue, that building out of the rest of the community. Whether or not we move forward and we are willing to advance, probably this was over the age of school, as a part of moving forward, really contributing to the community. I think that, you know, that's certainly, like I said, a discussion that we're, I'm willing to have with schools. I have not been away from the table, I've been at the table every week, sometimes talking about the facilities and also about the wellness of the community. And so, which we know that that's constantly, we need that act, but I certainly welcome the opportunity to have that discussion. The key thing is Richmond has got to be aggressive in its economic development program. If we're going to raise the revenue that we need to be providing to the children, what is absolutely must happen is relates to us, about new school system, and make that children here, five, well, East End, as kids deserve a decent education in the city of Richmond, deserve a decent experience, an experience, so get the quality education that prepares them for future career. They also deserve to go to schools, new schools that has economic inclusion, they have community, that's essential, but for building a good school system, and how in all of those investments, like, like as you said, we've made twenty-three million dollars, we shouldn't be stopping in the middle of developing this community, just like we stopped in Blackwell, just like we stopped in other communities before we finished them up. We must complete that, and all of the community, and I can say, I'm willing to have, I mean, I believe it's the best way to go, but we're going to be moving forward with the economy.
Trying to go back, hold up here, because I think we narrowed it down to a single school or a single neighborhood, and that's not a purpose. I think what we've got to get to is going back to the concepts, like, are we, and I brought this up in your past, are we promoting City of Richmond as a community school, small school within neighborhoods, at the Walkable Center? Are we trying to promote that concept? Or are we trying to consolidate and become new schools that bring in from a broader geographic perspective? And if that's the newer model, which I understand maybe is, is option five, because there's school consolidation and new construction, then these community schools have already been pretty much disregarded, they are no longer often options for the city. That's a concept that I think we need to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward on that concept. The question now becomes, if we begin to look at a city one, and we should be doing this irregardless, is we know that the boundaries of the City of Richmond are fixed, we know that school assets are fixed, we know these things are not going to dramatically change in the foreseeable thousand years in the future. The question then becomes, how do you optimize a system that is a fixed access? It's an optimization, it is a, we know that this neighborhood has young families in it, we know that this neighborhood has old seniors in it, let's redistrict, let's make sure that each school has equal utilization, and make sure that the transportation network is complementing that. But that hasn't happened, the story of redistricting and this concept has to happen kind of on a high level, and it can't be just a single neighborhood type of concept that we've so far gotten off of. So I'd like to talk about these concepts at this meeting, because I think if we can realign the concepts, then we have a much clearer path to funding what needs to happen. And I think option five, it's almost a year old, and you all have approved it, and we know that, I believe from an operational standpoint, Dr. Ben, the last time we had to point the pain and said, these are the funding ratios that we're going to make sure that schools have these populations, this is going to be funding. So can we get back to that kind of concept?
So I think, Councilwoman Aguilera, I think you're right, that option five does contemplate a larger footprint, physical footprint, and I, one of the things that me understand from the school board is that this is a change of dynamics, a change in the model, right? So when you say a bigger school footprint, people automatically think, I'm going from twenty-five kids in the classroom, twenty kids in the classroom, forty kids in the classroom, and that's just not true. So two things, one, it does not click that out of the model, because you get economies of scale, greater efficiencies, all the things that allow you to redirect dollars back into the classroom. Second, we've got, we've got to have a conversation, which is community-wise, city-wise, about whether this is, this model is acceptable to the people, the families, because one of two things has to happen, either it is or it isn't, if it is, we can move forward, if it's not, then the policymakers, the people pursuing have to recognize that and fund that, because it would cost more to operate these smaller schools. And I hope I didn't miss anything, but I'll refer to the two chairmen of the Facilities Task Force, if they have anything to add, before they do, right, Matt and Pam, who joined us probably ten minutes ago.
Just to give you another part that you mentioned, what we rolled out was a Planning Factor document that you were referring to, that gets to also to support, the second part, which is, just because you have a big footprint, doesn't mean you have to have large class sizes. That Planning Factor document is a document that says, if the board and the council adopt this, everybody, no matter what company you say, will know this is what a school's supposed to look like, standing. So there's an issue of what's it going to cost? We all know that we're saying that we want K and three to have this many children in the classroom, we want, you know, four and five, six and twelve, that was all part of what you referred to in the plan. The large building footprint came about because of sustainability issues. So if we have limited resources, then we can't have forty-four building footprints that we can sustain. And then gets to, what Joe referred to, to rearticulate the reduction in transportation costs, because you're not, it's not, and all those things, you know, are part of what they're asking me that we'll get to, it's completely unsensible to say.
And perhaps.
And we can build it as a residential, the state residential and school district, once we're cleared, here's the revitalization case.
And Dr. Ben, I appreciate that, and I was, the school board adopted the plan, that just, okay, we have not, as my council has, if we've only adopted, by now, we probably introduce resolutions of the world on the same page. I guess there will be other part of this that I think needs to be addressed, and in option five is redistricting. Redistricting is, is challenging, because it's taking people from one school to another school, but it's also a lot more cost-effective when you've got a school that's underutilized versus a school that is bussed in from the seams by the transportation, by changing the boundary lines. And I understand that's more theoretical than it is personal. But I think that there needs to be some strategic approach to redistricting, where maybe every two years, there's an assessment of the districts, so that you know guaranteed, you're going to be looking at the districts every two years and making a decision to redraw it or should not to redraw. And I don't know if that's the case, but it seems to me that that would be a better approach, and that you have it on some timeline versus what, and I don't think that this, you all correct me, has this school board actually voted on any redistricting?
We got pseudo.
Okay, so you got pseudo, and that was in two thousand and thirteen, okay. And at that time, it was, but it didn't do a whole citywide review. No, right, and that's where some other schools that didn't get redistricted are now way overpopulated than other schools.
But remember that the prior school board was, I think, did more for the river. And our students, so we tried to finish with, with, and I think that.
So I guess my point, my point being is the timing of the redistrict. Like, that happened in like June or something like that, when the next school year opened in September. And now you've got families who are scrambling, if you can do it, I'm just saying, if you can do it consistently, say it's going to be the other two years, or make decisions in October, then it becomes part of your process. And it doesn't become a, a base on a lot of other criteria.
Don't disagree, I think, but let's, let's make sure that we're all on the same page about the timing and why we did what we did. One, we were trying to finish, you know, the accomplishments of these other, the prior students. But just like this year, that year, we were faced with a very dire fiscal situation. And so, just like, you know, the administration presented the options where if we don't get another dime, we're going to have to do this. And so it's not optimal, it accelerates option five. So I would love to be in a place where we could do this every two years. But right now, we're staring down having to take some, some pretty dramatic actions, like closing schools and parks buildings and changing and going from transportation, you know, where we pick kids up basically at their house to a hub system. And if there are two things, and families are going to blast us and break us over the whole block, it's how we pick their kids up and what schools they go to. And I would just hope that if we're all on board with option five, if we're all on board with how we're going to move this school district forward, that when, when incoming virus starts coming, that we would not have nine Gs to head against, we'd have eighteen.
Mr. Ray. Just wanted to bring a little clarity to the conversation. The previous board adopted a resenting plan that we voted on in December of 2012. Correct. And then followed through, both of the territory issues we were having in 2013, we followed through with the remaining part of the plan. So it was the entire city, but only at the elementary level, wasn't the secondary. The other part, concept that we dealt with the Facilities Task Force, is the concept that a school that operates, an elementary school that operates with less than 650 students is operating at a deficit. The breaking the number of more schools to, for everything to pay for itself with the per people funding is around 650 students. And currently, we have schools at the elementary level that have less than 300 students. So we're not really pushing towards these mega elementary school buildings. We're trying to get somewhere in the middle that balances a community model with getting closer to break even numbers, so that we are operating more efficiently. We don't have empty seats in the buildings. As we all know, a lot of the empty seats are not where the students are. The empty seats that we need are on the north of the James, and, and the kids are on the south of the river. So we are, we are really challenged south of the James, you know it. And we're going to have to make some very difficult decisions in this budget cycle and things move forward according to the plan that the board on the city administration. Now, if you want to.
I just think that it's important that we, I don't know how it differs, but it seems that if we've broken the population in the south, or it's, of the city, has, has still extremely rapid today. And, you know, I think we talked about this before, but we really need to look at it from the city's population perspective as to what's contributing to the, to the really rapid increase in the number of children that's showing right in that quadrant of the city. Because I don't know that I've seen as many housing permits and housing developments taking place in that quadrant of the city. And so it just concerns me as to what else may be going on when we're not getting up. Because this is a huge, huge increase. When we built Oprah Valley and when we built Rarco as new elementary schools, and we worked with the schools to project the size and the population demands and so forth, we built those schools with what we thought was planning anticipation of population growth. Obviously, you know, the school has been over the year, and we're already putting, you know, things in those sides. Not a long time, okay, for us to be adding trailer, you know, additional buildings to the site of a, of a brand new school. This still really missing the law as it relates to population projection, the population growth. And, you know, we continue to talk about the additional growth in the south side. But I really think that we need to build together some kind of way to figure this thing out better, because even as we add on, build new facilities and so forth, I think that our way, our methodology for population growth is, we're missing the ball. We missed, like I said, we missed the ball, that's evident. And so I think, obviously, the methodology that we use again is not getting us where we need to. So I really challenge us to work closely with the schools and the city to make sure that we're planning all of the other kinds of things that raises questions for me as to what's going on in our housing environment in those communities, that we're not having that many new housing units coming on, that we've got that explosive growth in children population.
If we have some more progress, and I'm already, and we're not only at schools, but we have schools. So, sir, can you please let me know if I'm wrong? So we had a committee on City of Richmond, I think we had one. And one of the regular answer to your question, the city board as a city assessor, it's part of that discussion. Old schools are playing important, etc., so we had that discussion about what is the, what do you have on the field? As well as some of the land uses, because we're impacting that.
And I just wanted to, one other, right, to follow up your conversation ahead in the state schools. I served on the Prime and Commission for the City of Richmond as a council representative. And I can assure you that every time the Prime and Commission talks about the master planning for the City of Richmond, it is highly anticipated schools to be a part of the planning process. And so I think, Ms. Tuckley, as well, when we talk about the work that Mark is doing in the process of beginning master planning, that, that we talk about it in a, because a methodology that provides for input on an always at the table input process, not just a recording kind of thing, but just a planning process with the schools, the major schools, that gives us, you know, planning of populations and those kinds of things, so that they're part of that planning team, not just stuff on the reporting portion.
Councilor Robson, I would tell you that far as we know, this is, that we have a miss, but we can't control to a certain extent, is you take the variation of poverty to saturation, associated nonchalance. Do you have more families who are sharing dwellings?
Sharing.
Sharing dwellings. So when we create an office of family community engagement, when they do home visits, it's not uncommon that you will find multiple families. So that's part of some of the numbers that are accounted for, just in terms of dating.
And that's the reason why it's important, like, we are aware of those kinds of situations, because when we are not doing what we need to do to make sure that the housing policies of the city of Richmond are being modified on, first of all, it comes to us to think where we need to build more affordable housing, and the reason why we cannot afford to not address the need for more affordable housing, because people are double the number and so forth. We know the additional challenges that that brings about for the city that relates to that. So working closely with schools, as you all identify that, and we work collectively together to provide adequate housing and, and face the prices, just like we have the schools, that we have housing in City of Richmond. And, you know, I'm, I'm fearful of what the reality is. I speculate what you set out to be the reality, because we're not building that number of housing units for the growth of the experience.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ben, for, I suspect, that's what the clause allows us to double the options, so. Speaking of being sued, City of Richmond is one of the lawsuits that are there regarding their enforcement of zoning and other issues related to substandard housing that are just one fire, or one serious tragedy that City of Richmond is being sued. Wright County got a little trailer parked on Route One, near Belmont Golf Course, nobody said a word. So I know that we are falling to a different standard, but we'll be the ones who blame when the first fire happens, and it goes from unit to unit because of the substandard housing of people, of people in the units that whose own collapse. So let me just say that upfront. I think that we do need to look at, or we can work with folks to put them in better housing where they don't actually know of. But certainly, it's a, it's a balance that if you indicate that you're concerned about the health and safety of folks, then that better be the reason why you're doing this. Secondly, Mr. Ray, you had talked about that if these school buildings are north side and throw from the south side, could it be a solution to do redistricting where we set a, a maximum amount of time that we're going to visit the child that should be in the school bus? And fill up those buildings north of the river every time on an temporary basis before we're working with new platters and schools that are playing?
No.
Oh, please.
Okay, that is, that was something we looked at, with our transportation costs are through the roof right now, and the time spent on the buses with the, if they could, increase for our students. So it's not, it didn't come out as a recommendation of the task force, because we didn't feel it was in the best interest of students to be bused across the river, especially when we're working in communities where there's high poverty. Families lack transportation and access to their student. It's really not really the best practice to, to bust those kids across the river, even, even on a short-term basis. We have done it when we had emergency closures of school buildings. And I think we may get up in a situation where we'll have to do it again, but it's not what's best for those families and those students.
Well, I know that we see the river as a huge barrier, and unfortunately, it sometimes divides us in unnecessary ways. But was there a standard, certain distance on the bus? Or did we just see the river as, as a real problem of busting someone?
So it wasn't, it wasn't just the river, it's the time spent transporting the students, the cost to transport those students, and the distance from the family home. If a child gets sick, if things happen, we had to add additional resources when we had kids come from Fairfield to Clark's Heights, because if a child ran a fever or threw up at school, someone had to go to the parent to come get the student and take them back. So there are lots of challenges that when children are bused a great distance from their homes and they're in high poverty, those children face even more challenges. So it's not something that is cost-effective enough for us to, to pursue.
Thank you. The, with respect to, you know, that has been talked about, well, if there have been offers made, and it's far apart, from GRTC, or busing, some of those students, our high school recruits in particular, could you say that's way far off? Or the numbers that they offered for the needs that we have?
I wouldn't say much of his numbers. First of all, the first thing is that what staff is telling me is that is the location of our students first at the GRTC sites. Is what they've reported to me as being bigger chapters first is not the one. Is there a number issue?
No, we've overlaid it to him, and for our students walking this far greater, it just doesn't match up where our students live in relationship to where GRTC was rather.
Well, we, I think, early on, when the proposal first came out about using GRTC, I mean, you'll remember when you got back to the, it was hot, and I think, I told you, Dr. Ben, they were working through some issues, and we're saying, is this location plus that?
Well, so the bus stop where we were, you, GRTC, you're not speaking on that power, instead of, if we took that back.
For the, there's something, is there something studied going on to the GRTC?
Every route and every stop is being optimized. So if RPS has a rationalation on optimizing services for, 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 I hope that it won't be fixed. I think there's, well, it looks like all the administration.
Jay's not here.
Jay, do you know, in the first of the meetings on the GRTC network, studying.
I'm not sure what everybody.
I think it's a useful.
Rob, I think very helpful. But then, for you all being on the table, and quite frankly, you've been asked, but then I would say it's too late. To get that, it'll always be called, the buses involved, the man for transportation, and that's the reason for the, the, etc.
So, Councilor, I'm giving you a number that for us points to at least a touch of bright evening. If it's about three dollars a piece.
Or, or.
I'm thinking route, because it's probably, that would put us at a number that's at least probably most of the time we spend. That's kind of the conversation we would have with the vice speaker.
Okay, so with that taken into consideration, if you could possibly unload some of the school buses that maybe solve to another jurisdiction.
No, because the greatest, the greatest number of students at elementary.
I'm sorry?
Greatest number of students to travel on the bus, and the greatest number of buses on the road at elementary, second or middle, and third is highest, highest is my least fewest number of buses.
Okay, so with school, is that pretty of a bus to do?
No, because right now, we hire fleet runs around the middle. The greatest number of buses are on the turf.
Okay, I understand that, but are you saying that for some kids to ride the bus to high school?
Some kids would ride the yellow bus, but all my buses ride free route to morning, free route to the afternoon. I have 220 buses that roll on the elementary side. I have approximately 135 running the middle side, and I have about 105 that run in the high school side. So I would, three of them buses, by doing it.
Okay, so.
Correct.
Make it more efficient and effective.
Great, well, that's a very good concept. Is there a group underway to, you know, I was talking to my flash uncle who ran. Is there a group underway to, you know, I was talking to my wife's uncle who ran Catholic schools in Florence for twenty-some years, and he said that we Catholic school system never wanted that concept in those schools, thought it was a bad idea and have never accepted it. Haven't we listed a couple of case you rate schools?
Yes, I have.
Are we, would we seriously consider what conclusion did they come to that middle schools are a bad idea and start running eight to eight schools?
So, from my experience, I would be able to say that it's just a bad idea, but I found it depends on the demographic in the community. But we have a trade that has a rule, blueprints developed to make sure the board has all their options available for them, both from foot credit conversation we've heard, get it to the transit embassy of children, even one building and going to the embassy that helps with the combination of resources. So, potentially, we did it too because it's a double way to get one building for two. Possibly take two all, I make it into one, which is essentially one and a half times the size, something like that. And then I maybe cut some personnel costs by either eliminating services or reducing the level of position, for example, stuff I make in front of the elementary, the person from high school. I may have, I'll still have my code because I'm required to, to then drop the cost of recruitment out to the system or simplify, so economies of scale again come into play. In some cases, it is beneficial depending on the community and trying to search.
And how many, you said alive, the concept of doing that and in coming years, possibly would that aid you?
Well, depending on funding, we were prepared to show the board options.
And is that a question?
Same.
If those were in one case.
Well, I think with two, three, two that we're looking at, one, two, possibly an option for the.
Green and green.
Green and green, combination of dealing with the L-CAR compensation.
All right, well, I hope that that bears proof and it can be a contingency effectiveness and I'll use the ring on that to say that we're just not acting that you are also willing to do that ourselves.
So, Madam President, I think this is a good place to transition to, I guess, a budget discussion that we're going to get back to talking about, the idea that it would be helpful for us, for everyone to sort of understand, create a public context on the city side rights and how the past, you know, what we might, what might not get. And so, I don't know how much you want to sort of accomplish that, but what, I don't know.
I think the way it was, you also made it right at the end, the way it was, so let's start even.
Okay, for FY seventeen, we're projecting enrollment of twenty-one thousand nine ninety-two, which is forty-three less than what we projected this year based on last spring's actual enrollment. So, with that, state funding, the government vote, looks like getting another three-point three million roughly. The conference bill that just came out on Friday, I called State Farm this morning, it's not real clear yet what the total final impact would be of some of these actions. It's probably going to net maybe another, not a lot, sixty-five thousand dollars maybe from the total actions out of that because what they did is they took some of the money from, there was going to be a funded twenty-six additional positions at the elementary level, instead they moved it to a per pupil amount and have a lottery chance to get more flexibility and not have local management department. So, that could save us one point four million on the expenditure side of not having to purchase those, but there's also they added two percent salary raise in FY seventeen that didn't have previously. They moved nine-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars for us into that part of the funding equation and then our cost of that is about one point five million. So, it's almost an equal trade-off between the twenty-six positions we don't have to fund now for instruction and the additional money we have spent to get the state share the two percent raise for all us who use those positions. So, that's why it's going to probably hit after somewhere near break. So, that's still going to leave us in about the same position. When we look at that and additional mandates for next year, your group life insurance increase, our insurance increase, maintaining current service levels, continuing to run the same buildings, same staffing levels, same programs that we're currently running, that translated into a gap of eighteen million dollars, so about twenty-one million more expenses, less than three-point-three million of additional revenue. Government's budgets were left us with the eighteen million gap. It doesn't look quite based on final, final assembly action, but that's probably going to change in the first year or so.
And then, Mr. Westway, just in the spirit of disclosure, in case anybody hasn't seen, would you just quickly take off what the initial sort of proposal was to?
To balance.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, we laid out a portion of it would be implementing a modified transportation system, move more quarter hub system, a mod, of a modified sort, where I estimate we could save three million dollars doing that. Merging one high school into two campuses would be a million dollars. Merging three elementary school campuses into four would be one point six million savings. Relocating one elementary and closing one campus would save a hundred thousand dollars. Merging two specialty schools into two other campuses would be three hundred thousand. Closing two office complexes that are into another facility, so one facility would save three hundred thousand. Demolishing the old L-CAR real schools would save fifty thousand each on maintenance costs that we incur every year on those. Contracting on janitorial services, that was looked at back in twenty-twelve, the estimate was about three million dollars. There could be saved, but we have since cut quite a few of the custodial staff since that time in twenty-twelve, there were dramatic reductions that occurred in twenty-twelve. So, now that we're estimating, we probably could save maybe a million through contracting a percent. Then the increasing people feature ratio at the secondary level from twenty-two to twenty-three to one, two million dollars. And then eliminating other initiatives that were in our eighteen million dollar gap, another three million dollars, that adds up to twelve point six million. So, I feel this is about, close to six million now in balance. Yes, sir.
So, do you recall the process that we were looking at the last year where city council budget deliberations, there was again a budget gap, and I think it would be where the name was, last year something like.
It was twenty-six.
And at the time that Delta was funding the council, we had changed kind of what you've done now, and that would be to say this is how RPS would build that gap. But what will the projects be that don't get funded if the additional allocations of city is not there? And that is kind of the process that you used last year, you said, okay, well, we're not going to give, we're not going to give, we're not going to give this. That document says that we have similar process, could be very culpable at this stage because of what they have proposed by RPS.
And I think, this is just, this is, we gathered, you guys' discussion, so we want to continue working with that, I know that our administration presents to the council this week or next week, so we'll continue working with those and any sort of other document.
I haven't asked this, but I haven't asked, when we talk about privatizing janitorial services, how many positions are we talking that would be eliminated? Because if the consideration is combating poverty, how many people would be out of a job or either hired by this private company and lose benefits or lose income?
In the privatization that we've done back in two thousand seven, the private companies, where they're going to save their dollars are going to be on the benefit of the later cost. Generally, their cost runs substantially cheaper than the cost that we run. The actual number of positions is actually a little bit higher than the positions we have done. So, nobody would be out, there would be a reduction in profit and benefits that are offered, because that's the nature of the private side of market competition.
So, the folks that we have now have an opportunity to be hired at private?
Almost all privatizations that I've seen, both, for example, property management companies of the chain in the commercial real estate sector, your goal is to try to retain as many of the existing employees as possible, and so there wouldn't be desire to remove them.
But there would be a loss, they wouldn't be a member of the ORS and they wouldn't have a lot of the.
That's right.
Unrelevant benefits that.
That's right.
We're getting now, and as we saw in Chesterfield, there may not be as well-kept facilities as we have now, which we still have challenges now.
Mainly, but right now, today, we're all under position. So, we have challenges that are there that are unfortunately not going to go along.
Right. Did I, did I already say anything, you have a hundred positions to show up and down hold?
That's correct. Over a hundred positions, cut back in two thousand eleven, two thousand eleven.
What's the total number of positions we have?
Right after that, we were approximately one hundred and fifty-seven janitorial employees. They claim, they ask to claim twenty-eight to twenty-nine thousand square feet per person. Where the challenge is that we have inside school system is that in the course of a normal day, you will spend about eight man-hours just on the cleaning of the dining room between the breakfast and the lunch. So, if you've got twenty-four man-hours cleaning, you take away A, plus one of those persons there all during the day just to take care of the normal things that occur inside the school building, then almost half of your man-hours are used just in the normal school diet. Where's the cleaning? Cleaning occurs inside the evening, that's when the school's available. So, there's a disconnect, which is the reason why the staff, who does a tremendous job of working with the conditions they have, why some of our buildings have some of the challenges that they face each and every day.
And Mr. Graham, so the number you came up with to help your outgoing janitorial staff to need this for is based on the council, great state schools, right?
Based off actually what is out there from the analysis that we've done in two thousand and seven, the analysis of just my experience in two other districts where we had our own staffing relationships, as well as just looking at how our cleaning program is managed because it's a step-by-step.
So, each one of our staff covers twenty-eight thousand, the recommendation is?
We should be direct, seventeen to eighteen thousand square feet per hour.
And going back to what the DAC report was talking about earlier with moving forward and what it would look like to, you know, take some of these schools offline and the resources we would save, we wouldn't necessarily cut that staff, right?
No, I mean.
Because we would try and get closer to that seventeen.
Actually, actually, under the plan that we presented, there's seven custodial positions that were free up, that could be reallocated to other schools. There's approximately two security positions that would be freed up, that could be reallocated to other schools. So, note that we'd not be losing positions, we could reallocate where needs are.
I have two questions that I'm seeing that was supposed to say, I'm asked a lot of times, don't believe anyone's on the line, can you help? Yes, thank you, you can hit it too. Can you help to that way on that and also what the amount is there perhaps to save you to give and what that is like to them, so that people can have better?
I don't know what the number used to be, I don't think I can get that information for you, but what's happened over the years is they repurposed a lottery chance that used to be given, one-time use of for a facility, it goes more, facility improves, and now it's, it's supporting programs where it used to be part of the standards of quality, the basic S and Q funding, or the incentive funds, they've moved programs down there to fund other, those main programs out of lottery funds. So, they're not allocated the same way they used to be, that's the biggest change. Basically, we're getting today nine million less dollars with the three-point-three million dollar increase we're receiving, we're still nine million below where we were in FY nineteen and state farm.
Just one question, Mr. West, with the discussion of L-CAR, can you say it's a fifty thousand? This really is actually been closed for over a year now. Have, did we save the first fifty thousand?
Well, that's the operating cost, right?
Right, and we can say some money, but we still are hurting expense as we do with any building that we close, one, the key city alarm systems on, and then the calls we get for nightmares that are outside. So, boarding up windows, addressing different things, we had a break in this past week. So, there's an expense every time we do that, and by closing, eliminating the building, we produce those costs.
Okay. When we closed Clark's Heights, we suggested that we would net a million dollars. And so, we, L-CAR's been closed for a year. Would we have seen, would we have seen a savings of a million dollars using that?
Say seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand when closing of L-CAR, merging it into Thompson. Now, that's part of the saving we identified last year when you adopted the current year's volume for sixteen, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, building is current, you're quoting.
One thing I have, and it might be helpful, since we've got kind of the year-to-year budget that we're going through right now, is I know what's been proposed is how to allocate, but one thing that I'd like to understand, and I think this is more than that for proposal, is how option five, right? If we, if we implement, if we make that investment and we, we know the years in which CIP investments are going to be made, how will that flow through the operational budget? Whether there's energy savings, whether there's transportation, you know, or stacking of fuel, how do we begin to really quantify those algae budgets in terms of the investment that CIP does under option five, since we know that that's going to prove that?
We can provide that.
We can provide that, okay. And then the other thing, and this is something that I'm asking our city administration on because I know we have this limited debt capacity, which we can utilize, therefore we have to become smarter about. therefore we have to become smarter about when we take on debt versus is it something that we can do differently? And energy supports contracted is something that we know the city can do to upgrade boilers, H backs, do air sealing windows, et cetera, so that the buildings are more energy efficient. I personally did it at my house, so I mean, I know the process, but we don't seem to fund that the way that most localities would. It's currently in our C I P budget. But technically, it doesn't need to be done where it's going to take long-term allocation costs. And that's something provisioned in the state code is that you can actually do it through the company and part of the operational expenses, so that the company is, is contracted to pay, but it's not actually there. Can you give us a list of potential C I P projects that fall under that type of alternative financing to make your buildings more efficient? We know that they come at a prolonged period of repair, contractor, that operational expenses that they have to pay. But it might be able to free up some of our debt capacity, which is more of a stress that we might have to manage.
The challenge with that, is that you can do, we're probably about prosecuting rough numbers and talking about the number of the companies there, is about $18 million project.
Eighteen?
Now, our C I P for just five years is almost $91 million. So it can address a piece of, but it's like we said, there is no silver bullet to address the challenge that the school system has. It's not going to be a P P A, it's not going to be a store tax credit, it's not going to be performance contracting. It's going to be a sum of all of those programs is going to be, in my opinion, the way to address the problem. We didn't get into, you know, our needs to dagger 563.8 million dollars. And that's on today's bill. That seems building a school. If we don't build, close, consolidate, the combination, and just said we want all of our existing schools to be equal, to have the same facility resources so that every child has the same opportunities of enrichment, that's 645 million dollars. And the problem with the 645 is it doesn't address budget capacity. So then here's the additional money just to address where the students are coming.
But, but I guess my point here is understanding that there's not silver bullet, and understanding that there's potentially $18 million that we could get in energy performance contract out of the R P S facilities itself, and understanding that the city, if we also put under energy performance contract, we could reallocate all of the C I P as well. It's a, it's a portion of the picture. But there's nothing that will prevent us from actually executing on that sooner or later because presumably, those improvements are at buildings that are not slated to close, are not slated for replacement, that these are, these are operating costs, placing boilers, replacing H back systems as we know around the world. So that might be part of the conversation that we need to have in terms of how do we get the, the additional C I P budgetary dollars to execute on option five?
I think that's, I think it's, I think one thing that we are doing here is, especially, you know, we don't have a government that I can, the city, you know, we're accelerating our implementation of option five on the hope, where our faith, that the long-term money's coming. Because option five is premised on the idea that you don't do just one of the things you do in all. So it's closure, you know, reconsolidating, buy, rezoom, you know. So I think we're willing to do that, we're willing to undertake this exercise, but I think, you know, understand that that's what we're doing. So we get to the point where we go through, do this, close six schools and consolidate others, then we, you know, we don't build or renovate or span, then five years from now, there's probably a push-off in our debt.
I just, just want to piggyback a little bit on that, because I know you talked about 20-some million dollars in capital projects that are currently on the list for this upcoming year. And I just want to stress how serious the issues are in our school buildings. I mean, I know most of you probably saw the news, a five-pound brick that fell and hit a child at Carver a couple of weeks ago. We've got major health and safety issues that need to be addressed, that we've been putting patches and Band-Aids and trying to fix those things. So when you're balancing that to, you know, should we build a new, I don't know what? But this is not just nicely a desire of the school board to have these things fixed. This is, this is becoming a civil rights issue. This is, this is children who have a right to go to school and stand in the lunch line and not get hit in the head with a brick. So I think that when you weigh those options that are put before you, please consider those children in those buildings that are being harmed by the conditions within them and how our hands are tied with the lack of funding.
I just wanted to just also add to that, that my understanding is that kind of the O R S is certainly is leaving the local government and then leaving the city. But from what I can see, again, we've got all the patch jobs, put a lot of Band-Aids. Is there any reason particularly that we can start with some of the major problems, fix some of the major problems that are subject to solving to the safety of our students?
I mean, we have done with the C I P, but as the Council of Great City Schools data said, based on 4.5 million square feet expense, the school system operating budget on maintenance repairs would be a little over $8 million. Today, it's funded at $2 million per year. That $6 million shortfall every year occurred, that deferred magnitude just keeps getting pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. When you look at the C I P program, it also is using the Council of Great City Schools. Their analysis indicated we should have about $16 million a year for C I P. Our C I P over the 10 years prior to the year's arrival is $4 million. That $12 million shortfall continues to defer. And that's why this district has never had, as I've seen, the funding necessary to do normal maintenance repair as well as normal C I P. Because of that, we're in a situation where our roofs leak, we have bricks that fall off, we have roadways that continue to sink, causing damages to both people and to property. And doing phase one of option five is not going to lower that number dramatically. I know everyone believes it will, but it's just not. Two-thirds of the 44 schools that just came well are over 50 years back. And during that time, the funding, which I was looking at 10 years, I imagine if I went back 50, I would find it still wasn't, done things without that. As a result of that, we continue to have our hands tied behind our back and we make decisions every day, prioritizing a dollar, and like I've said, we're going to run out of funds on maintenance. In years past, we've gone over the limit. We will not do that this year. In years past, we haven't spent on our C I P. We have in the past two years that I've been there essentially. And we're going to continue, but from a prioritization of roofs, H T A C. And the thing that is most critical for us is because there's only a limited dollar spent, is knowing what is the long-term plan for school construction and buildings and so forth. Because if it makes, and that it doesn't make economic sense for us to spend a limited dollar on a school that maybe a year, or two, or five is going to disappear. That, that, I mean, you know, we just don't have that much money to begin with. So right now, we are behind the eight ball. From a facility standpoint, it's going to continue to get worse. It's getting worse each and every day. The staff of the district and our, and our vendors do an outstanding job, working a lot of long hours and so forth. But it's not fair to our staff and our students. At some point, we got to address our problem. And I hope that answers your question. I got them so wrong, so that's not.
So, Madam President, if we could, could we take a few minutes just to get an overview of the mayor's proposed budget? Because I know, I've heard a bunch of my colleagues, they get questions about a lot of this where I had a lot of, you know, all these things, so I think it would help us understand the context and the severity of the fiscal challenges in the city faces.
Well, my understanding is that the city, the community, the superintendent, Mr. Burton, to go over the specifics.
Well, all of us, school board members can't be there.
So I can provide a very, very, the city, well, the mayor's proposed budget costs $709 million. If you compare that to the last year's approved budget, that's about $70.1 million. And compared to the current year, it was just $89 million. The reason why there was an increase from the last year's adopted budget to last year's approved budget primarily due to the city's debt, salaries, and revenues. So we're seeing an increase from the approved budget, $70.1 million to $70.9 million. What the city is funding primarily are non-discretionary items. These are new items that are in the budget, they must be funded. And the funding, as I was saying, plus the Davenport budget, with a variety of fee increases. As everyone is aware, there were some reductions that were made to every single city agency to the discretionary operating budget. Then there was a recommendation to reduce a majority of the industry spending of the non-departmental above 25% reduction. This proposed, of course, the district school bill funding, compared to their 16th year operating budget. That's a broad, follow-up overview of the budget. Again, we're seeing a slight increase from last year's approved budget. Again, a majority of those increases are for non-discretionary means of dropping.
One of the challenges we're facing in understanding is that you look at the overall increase, your charge share of our projected 10 million increase. Real estate revenue, now it's probably about 18 million. Blue plan, increased revenue. Then with the council's resolution, it's interesting for us to look at, we look at, last year we were 60.8% of the real estate tax, just staying the same, no adjustments, that would reduce $6 million. And now we're dropping back to 4% of the real estate tax. Revenue's a draw. I'm sure that's the thing that we can ask all the time. So I guess it seems like it really comes down to choices.
In the non-departmental budget, I know there's some of the, I guess nonprofits, and I understand they're typically, but has there been any consideration to some of those nonprofits that are being funded that the school system is also funding to provide the services inside the school? Why, why is there that deep case?
Well, that's a very good question, question associated that I know before the past. We're trying to reassess that, to look at some of the services that we can see provide persons with food and persons with children as well, to see if there are any institutional opportunities there as well. I would expect and imagine that that used to be more of a closer, maybe, than that.
I'm just wondering, because the plan that was put forward, in that plan that the mayor presented, he talked about setting aside a certain percentage of the increase in real estate revenue for schools and having a dedicated amount. So I'm just wondering if that had been in place in this budget cycle and we saw that increase, why wasn't schools included in the increase in this cycle?
Well, my understanding is the plan, that's what the mayor, that's what we're talking about today, was convening the group, talking about the plan, the Mark Staden president was from the school side. Really, we mentioned the plan ahead, so that I understand how the plan, how it works in the future. My understanding is that you can have some of those things in place going forward, so that my understanding, we can be, I mean, I'm checking.
And I understand, and I'm probably not being very rude by asking that, but if, if that's a good idea and we need the money now, why are we waiting to put a plan together with this group and do it later? I mean, we, we have the need now. We have more than that need now. And if that's a good idea, let's do it.
I think, I would imagine that the plan needs to be settled out first. Whether it's just going forward without plan, but again, I'm not even answering that question.
I know. Thank you, Matt.
And I think you're onto this.
And I'll just mention, you know, I had a proposal a couple of years ago where 100% of the real estate taxes from surplus school properties would go into a fund for schools to let their daughter operate with bases, based on what you all have, that fund. And that, I put that on the table, we introduced tonight at the council. So it's not too different than what the mayor's proposing, he's just in that proposal, you know, all real estate. And 25% of it. But I think that's
20% of money?
Yeah, the new construction. But I think this is where some of what that proposal is, is very different because it's water net. And, you know, some of my notes here is, well, we're talking about doing tax influence and finance business. Well, if you're doing tax influence, now you've got to make sure you shape this percentage off, right? Because they can't be used to reinvest in that development that needs to go to schools. There are other things like that that we're going to have to evaluate on that proposal to understand if, if it's going to have an impact. And likewise, we've already approved economic development deals that haven't been implemented. But once they get online, it should then filter, but does that change some of the actions that was done previously? So I can understand why they might want to take a little bit more time to evaluate the proposed. However, it doesn't mean that we can't be planning on the use of those funds. Because my understanding is that, that post-use of those funds would help to pay down the debt service, on borrowing that would be needed to build your new facilities, right? That borrowing, and this is where Davenport information comes centrally. Davenport is already looking, you know, our real estate assessor has already given a five-year forecast of projected new development in the city of Virginia. And we already know what five years looks like in terms of new revenue coming to the city. And in many ways, that has helped the city has been budgeting on its biennial. And that's the information that Davenport has been using to say, well, your debt capacity is so much. Now, all of a sudden, this becomes an equation where of the $50 million, the debt capacity that we have for the next five years, because of that could be real estate taxes, maybe make sure that it's 50, now it has to go towards school construction.
And I understand what you're saying, and just quickly to respond, if the projection and you planned out with your economic development plan and the incentives was 10 million and you got 18 million, you still have more money. So I'm just saying spread the wealth, I mean, really, that's on. It was more of a rhetorical than, you know, not It was more of a rhetorical than, you know, not in both right now, but I don't, I really don't see why we should delay sending some more money out into schools.
But I think what that was planned to do was for the debt side equation versus the operating side of the equation. You know, if you really want to talk about it, from my perspective, you have the additional one percent of the meals tax that was implemented in the payoff center stage, and the public is informed that once the stage is paid off, then that funding can potentially be realized with rich and public schools. Currently, the city is paying thirty million dollars annually for the meals tax, right? So if you took whatever the one percent of the place, it could be a couple million dollars, that could be allocated, but yes, and that's something that I think should be evaluated, because that is already a funding issue that the public is already believing we're going to be able to do this.
Thank you.
Senator, anything you would say about this proposal that the school property that was sold with the, uh, the state's state tax, come back to the school, to, uh, I've got, I'm sure it's more than four decades, that not in surplus, or they're having surplus to be transferred to the city, like, uh, Norrell, the real school, and the whole area, and El Park.
Norrell and Norrell Annis are both being used as office space as we speak. The, uh, Norrell also is shared with the Parks and Recs operation. The real school, uh, is one that, um, has been used by the police, it's not been used by the school system in my town that we've been here. And then El Park, we would not surplus, because that was the intent there, was to build the new Alton Thompson, if that will take, so it wouldn't, you know, sort of.
So that's, that's all the building?
You have plenty that haven't sold. You've got plenty on your books, plenty of the school buildings on your books that are deeded up or back to the city that haven't sold. Arlington Road is the primary.
That, that's sold. But that one did sell. But from the others, and there is a list, and we have a list, but it's, it's about like eighteen properties right there.
On the school system's side right now, Arlington Road property has not closed yet. There is a situation with the title that has to be worked out, so that property has not closed at this point in time. The school system today has the real school up on Chamberlain in Azalea, that is vacant. We have Arlington Road, which is now being converted into a pre-K center to expand our pre-K seats south of the James River. The El Park Thompson site, which is being, is intended to be used for the new El Park Thompson School. Norrell, and Norrell Annis are both being used for office space, and to the best of my knowledge, there's no other locations that we have today that's vacant.
Arlington Road, uh, the council agreed to, uh, to sell that. Did we actually see the deed to it, or is that?
On which one? On Arlington Road, y'all have the property, and y'all have actually signed some agreement with a buyer. It has not been able to close, however, because there is, because of the way that was deeded to, uh, the schools, there is a, a situation involving the federal government on the title, that they're working to deal with and try to solve.
All right, Summer Hill?
Summer Hill is now back to the city. That was back to y'all about three months ago.
And when we, when the board passed the resolution to surplus the property, is the deed turned over to the city within four years, or is it?
Yes, yes, sir. Since I've been here, yes, sir.
One of the things that council passed was the rest of the board, and something that you're saying is to figure out what are percent of the, uh, the, the real estate tax. And so, as Dr. Ben mentioned earlier, it's sixty point eight percent last year, and now it's now fifty, five percent or six percent, is that right?
Right, uh, what the resolution?
The proposed budget would be sixty percent. Anyway, so, so is there any thought or interest in using that to set some percentage, whether it's sixty percent to sixty-five percent, as just sort of baseline, base funding for the school system, so that we know on the operating level, what percentage, you know, revenues come in, if it's a hundred dollars, we give it, you know, sixty dollars a half, or what if it's fifty dollars, we still assess that, so we know. And then, during budget time, we're really only talking about new initiatives that everybody can bring on, or move forward, you know, is that what we're retaining, or is that to, um, one? And how do we, because Dr. Ben has expressed, and Ralph has expressed, the idea of trying to separate further the discussion of CIP and operating, because it's sort of confusing for the people that represent, they're merging and mixing, and, so those are just two thoughts.
So I think, as I was mentioning earlier, um, the question is whether the city should, we should consider, um, a fifth percent of real estate revenue, your options, for, for this operational, or combination of operational, or, uh...
Well, I think it's, it's based on the board itself's ask, that asks us to calculate what our budget is as a percentage of real estate tax revenue, is that right?
Yeah.
And, and so, it doesn't make sense to, to sort of set that percentage in stone as a base. And so, we know going forward, council knows going forward, what that amount is, or based on revenue projections, because even if it goes up, we do better, if it goes down, we don't do as well, we know. So we, we know we're getting sixty cents in the bottle, or about a twenty, and that's what we get. And then, then at that point, we're only talking about what's new, what do we need, you know, is there a new program, is academic improvement, is it, you know, uh, K three, new K three, or STEM program, or whatever it is, you know, is that, is that worth exploring in order, or is it not going to give us school system consistency, and I think we also, we do also need consistency.
I, I think that, that was a qualification, I was asking, asking, that's what you were asking. And I think that that would have to be, I think it would be, um, always equal us to, depending as to the, uh, specific, uh, real estate taxes that, um, would be your option schools, um, as well as any other major, you know, component of that budget. Um, we look at what percentage of that budget takes up, and moves them out, just like you all, and we need to see personnel. It's all about salaries, and how many employees we have, and making sure that not only they have the salary, but then we look at it from the total city perspective. And whereas the city does have other sources of revenue, real estate taxes is a primary source of real estate, of, of revenue, that we, that we generate to help with services for the city originally. So, um, there may, there appears to be some difference between what percentage of the real estate taxes right now, is actually the older students versus, um, what is the veteran, or the whole operator of the city. But I think that between working with our fiscal advisors and our budget officers, so for, you know, coming to some possibility of a decent expectation, well, at least everybody will know what that budget is. But what we need to be clear about is that it's not going to be the eighteen million dollars that schools need this year, that it's going to be next year, or so forth. So, moving at additional sources of increasing revenue, but whatever means we do that, uh, it's going to have to be done, because at some point, whether it's eighty percent of the real estate taxes going to schools, or some folks saying sixty-eight percent, I've heard both, I don't know which is true, but, but that seems to have to figure out, um, we still have to look at the total budget and what percentage we can really make a solid commitment to, and I think it would be wise to do so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what Dr. Ben had been talking to me about, is just that would give consistency, you know, the folks who know where it started from.
But collectively, both schools and council, the mayor's office, we've dealt with this in other ways, how we generate revenue, we're implementing, close to moving at the level of providing the resources that we need to make sure that it will be relevant.
I would ask for another consideration, too, if we're talking about issues, we've probably responded to it with your name, since it's a bit drawn, next door.
We would wager that on that one. We're all taking this.
Well, I would ask the question of, has there been any consideration for the forms you mentioned from the city, in its functions and operations, because work, I came here from a city that was the same size, that doesn't have nearly the workforce, the size that happens, and yet they want to mount a wall.
So, one of the questions, one of the things that I think is important to be done, because we get that question, and I agree, I think, you know, when you look at the size of the city, and what our status is, and we look at other cities, um, when we compare ourselves to other cities in terms of poverty, we may compare ourselves by percentage, but when we compare ourselves to the compactness of poverty, and the impact of what that causes, um, when you compare those kinds of things on apples to apples, on just one, just a good deal, and a whole different situation, what would the cost to drive an academic to successful, and a standard of achievement, academic achievement that we want for the richer public schools? What would the cost for one school in a similar region versus another school, can be significantly different personally, the cost, and it should be, just because of the population of the rich and the poor. So, the same is true as it relates to how to look at the overall cost that we're talking about, uh, across the world for operation of the city, okay? So when we look at what it costs us for police protection, and some neighborhoods in the city originally, is significantly different than what it costs us in other neighborhoods in the city originally. But I think a right-size study, called the city originally, and rich and public schools, should be jointly done, so that we aren't only respect the fact that your operational cost exceeds what the state requirement is for the number of personnel that you have, and for valid reasons, it should. And the same is true for the city, but right-sizeing is certainly a study that I'd have to initiate, an analysis, not a study, I mean, a study is not for you. Uh, but an analysis of how we can right-size, and how we can maybe make some tough decisions, it may not be pleasant, but there may be some necessity. We do things in the city originally, uh, that we fight over a lot, that we think serves us, that perhaps we don't, we shouldn't be doing because of charge. Uh, but we have to work through those things, and hit to that point, that we're going to make a right-size decision. But I welcome, now, so next year, we're not at this point, where you make the right's, right-size of the study, for most schools in the city.
Um, I wanted to go back to what Mr. Born had mentioned, in doing a different timeline to talk about our capital needs, um, and I think that's a great idea. I think sometimes it can be confusing, especially for the public. This year, we've had, um, eighteen million dollar, eighteen million dollar gap on the operating side, but there was also eighteen million dollars that we were talking about in capital, and allowing that next step. So if we could look at the calendar, and perhaps have this conversation in another space and time, and it already be vetted by the time it comes to, to the budget period, I think that would be useful. And I also think, going back to what Parker had mentioned earlier, about you all have not adopted option five, I would personally love to see that happen. I mean, I think the data that we've put in, in terms of projections, population, I, I think talking about it with the CIO is a great idea, but it's very thorough. We had the realtors weigh in, they brought David Spidfield, Mr. Krantz, he's a professional, and I think his projections are within two, two percent.
Zero point nine percent.
Okay, that's much better. And, um, so if you all, and I'm just one person on this board, but I think it would be great if we were all standing together, saying, this is our fifteen-year plan for schools. Now, the money is the big question mark, and like Mr. Krantz mentioned earlier, and several of you have mentioned, it's not, we can't find it in this one pot, it's going to be all these little pots collectively, and we need to stretch it over a length of time. But I think if we come out together to the public, and say, we all agree on this plan, we all agree there are needs, we don't want to see this left behind for another decade, this is how we propose moving it forward, I, I think we can really make some progress there.
I think in this way, what this meeting truly goes back, I think, I know that conversation with the administration, and chairboards, and superintendent, was in reference to us getting to this place. I think we come back to a place where administration is on board, we're saying option five, we're just at this point now, trying to figure out what you're saying. How can we get us there? How can we come up with plans? I think that this was what that was about. Administration decided, as a, as a whole, as a city, that this is the dog process, and now we have to, as a team, determine how we get to this place.
And, and I think it would be helpful, and, and this goes back to the staffing allocation, resource allocation, based on the metrics that Dr. Ben had approved last year, and presented this meeting last year, I think the council take a position about that. That goes to Ms. Robinson's point on, you know, the staffing levels, and performance of personnel, well, that's telling us exactly, if you've got a school with poverty rates over this, you get this resource, that means, you know, by the way, you get this resource, and I think we should take that action to adopt in the resolution, while the school board has already approved for that funding scheme, and take action on the resolution to adopt option five, so that we are on the same page, so that when we do allocate CIP money, that we're all in a visible CIP money, and that all future administrations can't say, well, I disagree with the, the use of that funding, so I'm going to hold it up and redirect it, which we ran into that problem this year. You know, so if the council takes those actions, and we're taking the same actions that our school board is taking, then we are demonstrating that we are, in fact, moving forward, that...
I, I, I think that that's why I'm here. I think that the whole idea was that it's not, so school board and council, and then we still have to battle with administration.
So can I?
So at the end of the day, what we want is, that as a city, that this is what we're saying, we'd like to see happen, and as a city, we try to figure out how we go forward, with the options that have been presented, and even other options that may come to the table, on how we get there, when the funding comes. We all know, on our end, on administration's end, that there are some things that come online, in, in a few years, that can help us with that process then. On top of that, this, this proposal is being proposed, and so, I wasn't here back then, I'm here today, and it's about results. And so today, we're in a place where we're sitting down, we're talking together as a city, and we're deciding that we're going to move forward, and so, it's an exciting business to me, to see that this is the place that we're in, that our school facilities have had issues, but today, as a... have had issues, but today, as a team, as a, as a city, we have decided that we're going to work together to fix them. And so I walk, ideas, 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 because that's the only thing we're going to get to the end, which were us.
Um, I just wanted to, um, add to the comment that, um, the right sizing plan, we do have a right sizing plan, that's our facility task force study, it has all that information in it, it is very comprehensive. And another misnomer that is out there a lot is the, um, school district has not been moving towards consolidations. We have closed seventeen schools since two thousand and five, so we are as proactive as we can be, given the environment and the lawsuits and everything that's gone on with the school closures. Um, we are going to aggressively move forward with whatever plan is agreed upon. Um, option five came out of all of that right sizing discussion, so, um, I understand where you're coming from, we did, you know, we had forty community members, we had an architectural firm, we had G I S data post come together, and, um, that's how we came to the conclusions that we did in that plan.
And I'm sure going at facilities, task force, so I appreciate everything that you were saying, um, and, um, and I think that it's important that we go back and strategically look at more the work that has already been done, as well as the work that has already been done in all the city. I think lots of work has already been done, I think it's just a matter of us both being able to look at all the data collectively, so that we can appreciate, you know, all that has been done, and collectively, you know, there may be even more leveraging that we can do. Uh, you, you, we have sent some of the same kind of contracted auditors, you can call them, we have superior offices, I mean, when Dr. Bennett talked about auditing, uh, part of that auditing process is made recommendations was consolidating the pockets that may benefit from each other, and looking at things that we can do the same as well. So, um, we're talking about a significant increase in revenue, and so collectively we should leave those stones on turn and opportunities to generate additional revenue to make sure that we provide resources that are necessary, universal access. Um, and I think this is already state, I mean, schools are certainly, you know, what, what city wants to be known for lack of quality education, like every child in the city, which we can also make sure that we set our standards for what is quality education. I mean, it is quality education for the city of Richmond should, it should be at a minimum, it should be at the state average of that all the time. I mean, whatever that means to make that legalizing, that's what our five-year goals of planning should be programmed around, and what we actually, the economic development decisions that we take in other decisions is driven by that factor, who are living in transit, that one area. So I think we're all on the same page, it's just figuring out all of those stones that have to be turned to generate the revenue that is necessary. Ms. Born?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, everybody else has said, I think this is a great beginning of conversation. Um, to me, schools cannot be neighborhooded, just such a problem, if you don't have the neighborhoods, you're not going to have a city. Somehow we have to figure out how we get there. I think in terms of the budget, I know that before I come this year, we're going to consolidate the budget, we will create monies to things like public safety. So we have schools as a major priority, but we have other priorities in the city that we have to balance between schools, so if they work together, maybe we can get there. I think in terms of option five, option five is a great option, but I like the idea of a committee to figure out how we fund option five before we adopt it. It's like saying, I want to have a Gucci bag, but I don't want to do a Gucci bag. I think we need to figure out, how are we going to do this in a tangible plan, and then forward together to get these facilities and new facilities to where we need to go in terms of providing good information.
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to respond to that, just the concept of a Gucci bag just really unnerved me a little bit because I, I know, I just want to.
I was just searching for something, but.
I know, I want us to think of schools not as, not as some kind of designer thing. These are absolute needs that we have, healthy and safe school building, so when we, when we're looking at the priorities, you know, we should think of it as more as food on the table than a Gucci bag.
Yeah, I take that, that's fair.
I know, no, I'm not trying to beat up.
Surely, surely I don't equate this, I don't equate this to niceties.
Right.
I equate it to necessities, but we need to work together to figure out how we do all these necessities, schools, public safety, streets, infrastructure, all of those necessities, that we need to figure out how we can best, um, in order to get this done. I think that's something that we all get to do, and I apologize.
No, no.
Yes, um, so I am encouraged by this conversation, I look forward to the task group coming together to really vet, not only right sizing and working out analysis that have been done already for us on our side, but looking at real estate options in terms of percent and or other revenue options, looking at what it is that we have, I know the general city just closed down, so the state dollars would come up on what implications of that would match, and this is what for six and seven to be what for the following year. And so I am really interested in getting started with this discussion, it's way past due for me, we're talking about state of the art, schools to prepare our kids to be highly successful in a highly global, highly technologically society, it would way past minimum for me. And so I'm encouraged and excited that we're at this place, but it's a little overdue for us all coming together. And so I guess for me is, when do we get started?
I agree with what I'm saying, though, I, I mean, we have stood ready, we stand ready to get to work now, we were ready yesterday, and I think, you know, to our credit, we've met two times before this. I mean, it's good to have the administration here participate, um, but I think, you know, from our perspective, you know, a couple things, one, we've tried to do everything that's been a hassle to us. The council and the city, everybody watching, we've created a plan, we've proposed one with metrics, we've agreed on eight, eight measurable things that you all judge us on, we're judging ourselves on, we've got facilities task force plan, you know, we're undergoing audits, performance reviews, and we're going to continue to do those things because we want to be good partners because it's the right thing to do. Where we struggle to, to, where we struggle is, we've, a lot of this conversation we've had each time we've come together, a lot of this conversation we've had each year, and so while I'm colored by the ash and words on paper about all of our funding strategy, that does not eliminate the immediate need that we have, whether you're talking about the increased number of students we're going to face in September, or whether, whether you're talking about probably closing schools, probably going to try and downsize our workforce, because we, we have bills that have to be paid from the law on healthcare, retirement, we have to match state funds that we're getting to keep kid three class size, you know, small, because we think that's important, it's the right thing to do. Uh, so, so it's hard, over the next couple of weeks and months, that we can work with council and, and try and find some dollars to help us get to the place where we're able to take advantage of the long-term funding streams and all of the same. We've got immediate concerns that have to be addressed, so, I mean, I think this is a great conversation, I hope it's an appeal to some people, um, because as we all know, our budgets are our biggest thing of our properties, and we know that, it's true for families in Richmond, it's true for us, um, so, um, I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
Mr. Born? Um, I'm encouraged by the time we have here today, but I, I just want to be, I guess, fairly direct, um, and say that, yes, there is a great need to, how to quote-unquote balance all of the necessities, um, but I, I personally do feel that, um, the children have to rise to the top, and the courage is on the take for us to make sure that we stay focused on that reality. Mr. Born just talked about some of the things we're facing, bricks falling, overcrowded, students in marginal units. We, it requires courage, um, to deal with these immediate things that are happening, and, um, I, I'm glad we're here, the next three weeks are going to be time for real courage, so that we can make sure we say to our children what I'm hearing in this room, that they are part of, that we're going to have to honor that. And I think the rest of the city also have to accept that, but sometimes when something is so off balance, we have to do courageous things to try to get that heart that's really, really suffering, help at that point in time. I think now, the children, they're at a point.
I would like to ask that we actually take the, I was going to bring up the reference to public safety, the same rule to the public safety. To me, it's an investment to get high level control, and it's going to take a significant investment to get us out of all of the public education. Mr. Born, reference, I imagine, spending money to save money, I think there are very few organizations that can actually say that you actually tell so many different things in the public sector. We actually are great partners, and I think I'm absolutely delighted with a strong working relationship with our chief, I hope you can take this. I would also probably guess that you would agree that the city has a focus on youth, that we don't fix the pipeline, which is one and a half times the pocket rate of the overall city. All we're going to do is backfill the pocket, and all the work that's being done to fix it. If we don't change the paradigm with what's happening with public education, we're going to continue to challenge the health care, because we are part of health care reduction and increasing health care for individuals who doesn't get a job and are employed, and typically have health care. We are economic development, the chamber has admitted that, we're real estate government, the real estate association fits that, it says that, you know, we got a recurring theme that says, I'm happy now, but if it's not better later, I'm moving out of the city. So the swing that we're experiencing is actually plateauing, stalling, starting to decline in terms of the education situation. It is really one of the biggest sticks to sustaining the positive in the city and actually improving, and I would just ask that we keep that in mind. You know, I think about it every day when I go home, because not only have services superintendent, a source of parent, and the difference between what I may do for my child and what another person's able to do for their child in another city, should not exist in this city. That is the hardest part every day, to understand and deal with. One P T A doesn't pair yourself up, can't get access to one thing with another side of the city they can, because it's a fun job to do. I walk home and say, that should be our job, to give everybody a high quality education opportunity in a way that's in the city. So this is one of the complaints, this is understanding that the environment closes attitude also. We put nine kids on the bus this morning, who were trying to create second chances, or maybe third chance, I don't know, depending where they are, at a high cost to run that program. At the end of the day, if they come out of the side of a better place, it is absolutely worth it. So I just hope that we do the best we can, I agree with you, council, and that's public safety deserves investment, and we all so.
I, I would just go back to him, what Dr. Born said, in this way, it seems that we don't walk away, and if it doesn't come up to be the eighteen million that you need today, whatever we sign, that you know to other children is worth. Um, the difference in your job and this job is that someone calls me and says, the difference in your job and my job is that someone calls me and says, I need you to attend the vigil, not just because it's in the district, but because I'm a council representative. And so it is a little different on this side, it doesn't mean that we love the children any less, that's not, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that because, like you all, being over there, our parents, your job is different than your child's job. Your child sees it the way that they see it, you see it differently because you're the parent. Over here, what we're saying is, we have a array of things that are a priority. Our children are a highlight, her education very important to me, a single mom, I did everything I could think of to make sure that that little girl had what she needed. And so when I took this job, that's what I will do on this side. What I'm saying is, at the end of the day, if this council cannot come up with eighteen million dollars in the budget, I would hope that you would know that we did our best and we tried our best to make sure that those children got the education and the help that you needed, being that you're the school board, to do what you needed to do to move your job.
I, I, thank you, President. Um, and what I'm saying is, I believe what you just said. I believe you have to believe everybody who cares about children. But what I am still saying, you know, you just said, because I'm on this side, I am still saying, our children are the number one, in no way saying that you all don't have it as a problem, but from this side.
So, Madam President, I just want to say one thing, I think walking through this thing, I mean, where, when I first came on city council in two thousand and eight, the murder rate in the city of Richmond was well over a hundred persons a year. Um, we were called the murder capital of the state, maybe even larger than the state. And there was a concerted effort showed to make the murder rate of the city of Richmond. A few years before that, our population had dropped. A few years before that, our population had dropped tremendously. Our real estate property and values had dropped significantly. And we took aggressive action as a city, as formerly known as City Council, to put in place a tax abatement initiative where people could come in and buy properties for land value and the value of existing property was moving to nothing. But I had to be dollar invested and take the real estate taxes on that low value, sometimes as low as $5,000 if they do. All of those hard, very hard, tough decisions, these taking tax dollars on, in order to bring tax dollars to the table, was what the city made some very, very tough decisions today. And I think that it has been a growth process. It's been, we're talking buildings 50 years old? That's the same 50 years when we had to do tax abatement on real estate in order to get investors to come into the city of Richmond so that we could start growing our economic base. That's the same 50 years. The disinvestment is huge. And poor children, African-American children have suffered. And poor neighborhood, African-American neighborhood have suffered tremendously. By the decisions that we have made in order to grow our economy to get to a place that we are at now, that we are actually a growing population and people wanting to live in the city. There's been huge sacrifices that we made all the way down. And I think that just like we did a few years ago when the murder rate was at 100 plus, we said to the development community, the private community, the non-profit community that came to our door looking for support, unless you have incorporated your strategy, a way to help us reduce the murder rate in the city of Richmond, you're not the partner that we're looking for to do this with. And I think it's time that we say the same thing today to every private sector investor that comes around to us and wants to do business in the city of Richmond and wants the city to be a law leader, play any nonprofit, and any other partners that are looking at opportunities, hand out collectively, our staff and the work that we do, if you can't demonstrate how you're putting children first, first in the city of Richmond, you're not the partner that we need to do this with today. And that's the message that I think we need to leave this session with. And we also have, Franklin, we need to put a process in place, a group of people, whoever they are, that is working year-round. But it's part, Dr. Newfield, about council, education committee, where school board members also serve or whatever. So that we are working year-round. This is not a budget, annual budget thing. This, if we don't plan for a five-year budget, we're not going to get there probably doing on annual budget. So I welcome the opportunity to sort of, I think, to do this.
Hi, thank you, President. I'm sure that you all are receiving these emails. They are of, and the way we win a political battle is to put one in the truth against the other. And run up the taxpayers and the school system are made just opposed to one another. Which side you're on? Any emails saying no, and with the word in front of it begins with an H, no, about increasing schools funding and, you know, it's on and on. So I want us to all be aware of that. It isn't a battle between the taxpayers and the schools. And to frame it in such manner is going to be a disservice to all. So I just want everybody to be aware of that. If you ever receive one, that's what I'm going to say. And to meet, to have united front against that kind of challenge.
I think it is, you know, I would agree that it's a shame when we hit two sides against each other, but as I said a couple nights ago, which really is the schools issue. This is the city issue. It really is. And I would also say that the same people that might be advocating poor schools are also the taxpayers. So we were elected to make the tough calls. And, you know, from where I sit, I'm not sure that as I'm around the city and the schools and my sense of business, people want to make a mission of our education. But more importantly, they want us to make that mission. They, they elected us to make the decisions, whether it be about most rapid transit, public education, public safety, whatever. We got to put all these pieces together. And so I think we all know the problem. I think we should just, we all probably need to work and figure out how we can, how I have to take to the whole kind of challenge.
Thank you all.
And we need to get, um, you know, can I ask that the staff, we'll get together, we can begin to work on a team that's necessary to move across the board. Yes.
So you're asking that the staff please work on, part request, two resolutions that we should be introducing along with supporting of, uh, for two or three plans for how this one, that we're going to be doing for.
And also staff, two formal decisions that just going to want to put out.
I guess what I really want you to clear out is that we are committed to be here to start as soon as possible, this group that will look and vet these discussions, comments that we have, whether it's virtue, whether it's rights law, all of those things, we're going to come back with a plan that we can look at in the context of this discussion and prioritization of education in our city. Is that the other one?
Yes.
Can you, is that what you want to do? I can't hear you, Jeff, I'm sorry.
No, I understand.
We said it.
We'll, we'll do it.
Okay.